Okay, we will reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council. Is there anything to report out, Mr. City Attorney?
No final action tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we will adjourn the special city council meeting and adjourn the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. The Clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Chalam, Chirla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
And Hal.
Here. If you will all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any agenda updates?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Items 10, 11, and 12 are being continued, and they are revised staff reports for items 5 and 14 on tonight's agenda, a copy of which has been previously provided to you, and they are also available on the table in the back.
Okay, do we have dates for the continuation of Town 11 and 12?
June 14th, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All three of them?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody who was here for those consent items, please return to us on Flag Day. And then we will move to business from the floor.
At this time, you have no request to speak under business from the floor from members of the audience. Is there anybody online who would like to speak under business from the floor?
And just to remind you, business from the floor is anything that anybody would like to take three minutes to talk to us about that is not on tonight's agenda.
You have no request online to speak?
Okay, in which case, we will move to scheduled presentations.
All right, your first item this evening under scheduled presentation is a presentation by the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District. Online, we have General Manager Gary Goodman. He will be providing the presentation to the City Council tonight. We will have PowerPoint presentation slides advanced by the Deputy City Clerk. So Gary, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, want to thank the Council for allowing us to give a presentation, to give kind of an update as to what we're anticipating for this upcoming season as we're starting to get all of these hot, warm temperatures there. The mosquitoes are definitely reacting in kind and starting to come out in force a little bit more. So my name's Gary Goodman. I'm the District Manager for the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District. We cover vector control for both all of Sacramento and Yolo County. And I just want to do mention that your appointed Representative Craig Burnett has been on our board for almost 40 years, and he is a strong advocate for public health and has been an excellent leader for our district. Next slide, please. So our goal is to essentially try to protect public health, and to do this, we provide safe, effective, economical mosquito and vector control. And specifically, when we talk about vector control, we're looking for diseases. And the one that we have most prevalent in our particular area from a mosquito-borne standpoint is West Nile virus. It started initially in 1999 in New York City and within four years made its way across the country. And it's something that we've been dealing with since 2004, and we will continue to because West Nile virus is a bird disease. It's carried by birds and vectored by mosquitoes. And so we have the right types of mosquitoes that can vector this disease, and we have the right types of reservoir birds, the crows, corvids, and jays, that essentially house the virus even over the winter time. So we will start to see some of our West Nile virus activity pick up over the next few weeks as the weather warms up and we start to get into our summer season. Next slide, please. So our folks go out on a daily basis, and essentially, they're looking for all of these different types of mosquito breeding sources. And some of them are very easy for us to see, like rice fields or wetlands, irrigation ditches, those types of things. The more difficult ones to find are the things that are in people's backyards. And so that's where we really need the public's help in being able to try to identify, one, if you're being bothered by mosquitoes, or two, if you see a potential mosquito breeding source, is to give us a call. We typically come out within 24 hours to be able to try to assess the situation and take care of the problem. And so I know that a lot of, we deal with a lot of unmaintained swimming pools, and that is a big issue for us. But also, catch basins are another thing that just collect that water down in those basins and are a perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes. And so we really try to implore the public to give us a call and let us know when or if you're being bothered by mosquitoes, but then also go in your yard once a week. Mosquitoes need standing water to breed, and for the most part, water that lasts about a week is perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes. So if you have anything in your backyard, like buckets, dog dishes, or toys, anything that can hold water for a week, just dump it out once a week, and that would really make a big difference in terms of reducing the mosquito production. Next slide, please. We use what we call an integrated mosquito management approach. The first one is public information. We have a public information officer, and then we also have a very active school program. We give presentations to assemblies at various schools throughout the district. We have a very active social media program, and then traditional advertising such as television, radio, and newsprint, just to try to get the education out to the general public as to what they can do to recognize potential diseases or mosquitoes that are in the area and to try to protect themselves. The next phase of what we have is what we call surveillance. And this is us putting out various traps throughout the district and essentially bringing those mosquitoes back to our laboratory so that we can count and separate them. So we typically, in our area, we have about 22 different species of mosquitoes. Not all mosquitoes transmit disease. However, we want to know what the population is doing at any one particular time. So we have daily traps and weekly traps that we bring back to our lab. We separate them by species and then separate them by sex, males versus females. So that way, we have an idea as to what the population is doing over the course of a week, what's it doing in relation to this time last year, so that we can then mobilize our folks to be able to respond in kind. Then we have a biological control program, and in the center of the screen there, you should see the small mosquito fish. And we have about 22 ponds at our facility in Elk Grove that are dedicated towards breeding these small fish. We're probably the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country, and we plant about 3,500 pounds of fish per year in just Sacramento and Yolo County. We then have an ecological management department, and this department works with landowners such as U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, wetland owners, and large farmers, just from the perspective of, are they producing mosquitoes on their own property? And is there something that we can do to try to help facilitate the reduction of that? We have some heavy equipment, such as a backhoe and a dump truck, and we also employ a number of drones to be able to try to take a look at what the property is doing, and is there a good way to try to help move that water so that it's not stagnating and producing those mosquitoes? And then the last aspect of our mosquito management approach is chemical control. And this is essentially, as I mentioned, those technicians that go out and look for those breeding sources on a daily basis. When they do find breeding, they can treat this with what we call a larva side in their aquatic stage. So mosquitoes start in water. They go through about four larval stages, a pupal stage, and then emerges as adults. And when they emerge as an adult and they take a blood meal, then they're laying about anywhere from 150 to 200 eggs at a time. And so our goal is to try to get them in their aquatic stage before they emerge as adults and take a blood meal. But when we do have active adult mosquitoes and/or West Nile virus activity in a particular area, we can also employ our adult mosquito control, which is done by either backpack, truck, or even airplane as well. Next slide, please. So here's a snapshot of West Nile virus activity in California over the last few years. Last year was actually a very low year in terms of West Nile virus for California with just over 120 cases. But one thing I want to try to point out is, West Nile can be a very, very serious disease, and typically, these cases that are reported are actually the more serious neuroinvasive form of the disease, which can lead to encephalitic-like symptoms, specifically blindness, paralysis, and of course, even death. And so the CDC estimates that for every reported neuroinvasive form of West Nile fever, that there can be anywhere from 30 to 70 additional cases that go severely underreported because typical symptoms are something that we've become very familiar with over the last two years, flu-like symptoms. But in the middle of summer, that's very unusual. And so if you're experiencing those symptoms and you recover, then you may never go to the doctor, you may never get it diagnosed, and you may never know that you even had West Nile to begin with. And so the challenge here is, we believe that this disease is severely underreported, and so there really are thousands of people that are suffering from West Nile on an annual basis. And we want to make sure that the public is aware of what those challenges are and things that they can do to try to protect themselves. Next slide, please. So here's a snapshot of West Nile virus activity in Folsom. As you can see, the red triangles, I believe, or the red circles are positive mosquito samples that were in and around. We didn't detect anything in the city of Folsom last year, but you can see just on the outside that we did. And then the yellow triangles are positive dead birds. And so these are birds that were reported to us, that we picked up, and then they tested positive for West Nile virus. And so for us in Folsom, it was a very light year, but this upcoming year could be a very different one. Next slide, please. So one thing that I think we've talked about in years past is invasive mosquitoes. And so as I mentioned, we have about 22 endemic species of mosquitoes in our area. However, in 2019, we discovered a new species of mosquito that is not supposed to be in our area. It's called Aedes aegypti, or the yellow fever mosquito. And this one likes to live around people. It likes to bite humans, and it typically habitates around people's homes. And so the challenge associated with this is twofold. One, they are very hard to detect because they are typically found in people's backyards, and it's hard for us to do a lot of surveillance throughout people's yards. And then, two, the other challenge is that this is a very effective vector of more exotic diseases such as dengue, Zika, and chikungunya. And so we don't want this mosquito to become established in our area because we typically do have cases of these exotic diseases, typically for folks that are traveling, and then they've been bitten by an area where these diseases are endemic. They come back to our Sacramento area, and they start to experience symptoms. And if these mosquitoes get established, then we could have local transmission of these particular diseases in our area. And so we really want people to be aware of this particular issue, and then again, give us a call if you're being bothered by mosquitoes at any time of day so that we can come out within the next, to be able to try to assess and take care of the problem. Next slide, please. So here's just a brief snapshot as to where we've detected these invasive mosquitoes. So there are places closer to the city of Folsom and closest as Olmsted, but we found activity in Elk Grove and winters in Yolo County. So we are starting to see more and more of these invasive species, and we want to know if people are being bothered by them so that we can assess where those are and then be able to try to take care of the problem. Next slide, please. So for these particular mosquito sources, again, as I mentioned, they like to be around homes. And so these are a lot of sources where we found them. These are in people's backyards, just photos of pots that are holding these types of water. And this is where we really need the public's help to be able to try to identify and dump these things out. And of course, we recognize that we're also in a drought year, and there's going to be a lot of restrictions on water use. And so we recognize that people are going to start conserving water, bath water, or washing dishes, those types of things, and they want to use that in their garden, and that's great. Just make sure that they're not standing around, that that water in those buckets are not standing around for more than just a couple days before you actually use it. Next slide, please. So when we do detect these particular mosquitoes, we have a lot of outreach that's done. We send emails out to try to inform elected officials and then also folks in the area. We have to do a lot of door-to-door inspections because these mosquitoes like to be in and around people, and so that becomes very labor-intensive to be able to try to do it. So when we knock on someone's door, it usually takes about 20, sometimes up to 40 minutes to do an inspection in someone's yard because these mosquitoes like these very cryptic, hard-to-find sources of water. These mosquitoes have actually been known to breed in just a bottle cap of water, and we even have evidence of them breeding in a potato chip bag that had just a little bit of water in it. So it's very hard to be able to try to find all of these types of sources, which is why it becomes such a problem to be able to try to remove it. Next slide, please. The other thing I wanted to try to highlight, we also have a tick program. So we do surveillance for ticks and specifically then test those ticks to see if it's carrying Lyme disease, which is a concern for our particular area. So we go out, and the picture there shows what we call flagging. And you take a white canvas and you run it along the trailheads, and then we can pick up ticks, and we can take those ticks back to our office, and we can test them to see if they're carrying Lyme disease. If they do carry Lyme disease, then we start to post signs at trailheads and things just to let the public know that there is a concern and that they should be watching out for ticks and make sure that they're taking appropriate precautions so that tick does not bite them and have the potential for transmission of Lyme disease. Next slide, please. So Lyme disease is caused by a bacteria. It's called Borrelia burgdorferi, and it spreads from an infected, essentially, western black-legged tick, which is what we have here on the Pacific Coast. And so typically, the tick has to be attached for about a day before it can really transmit the bacteria. And Lyme disease, the symptoms start off as a relatively mild illness. It begins anywhere from three to up to 30 days after the tick bite, and sometimes it gets mistaken for other illnesses, such as just the general cold or flu. So some of the general symptoms are fever, chills, and headache, similar things that we've been dealing with with COVID, and of course, other symptoms such as West Nile as well. And so typically, what people think of when they think of Lyme disease is that bullseye rash. And so the picture there shows the rash that begins to start, and then it starts to spread out. And sometimes, as it spreads out, it kind of wipes itself out, and that's what creates that bullseye. So if you do see this type of symptom after potentially getting bit or pulling off a tick, definitely want to go see your doctor so that they can take care of it. Next slide, please. So this is last year, our tick results. These are areas within and around Folsom that we have done, and typically, we do our tick surveillance around the American River. That's where we tend to find a lot of ticks and/or have had findings of Lyme disease specifically. And so as you can see, the red squares there, we had 18 positive samples, 18 ticks that were tested positive for Lyme disease. We had about a little over 350 ticks that we collected in these areas that were negative. So while the positivity rate is not large, it's still significant enough to potentially transmit to the population, and that's what we want to try to protect against. Next slide, please. That's really all I have that I want to try to bring to your attention. Again, we implore the public, if you're being bothered by mosquitoes or have any questions, please give us a call at our phone number, 1-800-429-1022, or you can also visit our website at fightthebite.net. And if there's any questions from the Council, I'm more than happy to add them, but thank you very much for your time.
Anybody have any questions for Gary?
No questions.
No, I learned it.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to Mr. Burnett for representing the city of Folsom for so well and so long.
Absolutely.
So we can get you on TV.
So I worked for the mosquito abatement district when I was going to Sac State, worked summers, and then the representative for the city of Folsom passed away in around 1980, and then the mayor at the time, Jack Kip, appointed me because he knew I used to work for the part-time for the mosquito abatement district.
So you went from being a hornet to a mosquito?
Yes. Always a hornet, though. So one thing I wanted to emphasize, Gary, covered everything we do. One of the concerns is the day-biting mosquitoes. That's the one that carries the yellow fever, Zika, chikungunya, and so forth. And those are the small, little daybiters that you find in the, he was talking about in the backyard sources. So that's something the public needs to be aware of, and we're finding more and more areas where they are breeding and trying to get the public to recognize that. I talked to a gentleman here a couple of years ago. They grew bromeliads, and they're bromeliad-y water, so it stays in their leaves. They had thousands of these mosquitoes, just down in Southern California. And these people, oop, excuse me, trade them, and they brought them up here to Sacramento and other areas. So that's how one way these little Aedes aegypti mosquitoes get established in our area, and it's a very difficult job, trying to find them, trying to control them, very expensive, very labor-intensive. Gary said it takes like 20 minutes to go through a typical backyard, looking at everything down to the potato chip bag or the bottle cap. So thank you again for my reappointment, and I'll continue to serve. So anybody has any questions, give me a call.
Is there a part of, right here, is there a part of North America where the Aedes aegypti is predominant as a mosquito breed?
Florida, Southern California, yes. And of course, in South America, where they had the big outbreak in Brazil several years ago that caused the shrinking brains of the babies, caused all sorts of mental health problems.
Got it, yeah. I moved here from Michigan, and I can recall being viciously attacked in the woods of Northern Michigan by large mosquitoes.
Large, yeah. That's our state bird, isn't it?
Yes.
It is.
Thank you.
Michigan and Wisconsin, it is a state bird.
Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us on to our next scheduled presentation.
This is item number two, the Folsom Plan Area Semiannual Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Member says City Council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. You may recall, at our last quarterly update on the Folsom Plan Area activities, we talked about doing this less frequently. And so this is our first semiannual or six-month report out on activities. So this will cover the period, the last quarter of last year and the first quarter of this year, which is essentially October 1st of 2021 through March 31st of 2022. As you'll recall, we go through a range of activities primarily housed or fostered through the Community Development Department, planning activity, site activity, mapping, building, and then we share this information out on the public website. This is the latest entitlement exhibit from 2021 that shows approved maps and final subdivision maps that are consistent with the Folsom Plan Area specific plan adopted by the city in 2011. First item I'll go over is that we received three new planning entitlement applications formally. Those are listed here, and I'm going to show you a slide on each of those. We've also had several pre-application meetings and discussions with potential developers that are going through their due diligence process, and we don't share those out until we get a formal application. So the first of those three is Mangini Ranch. These are homes requesting design review approval for a 53-home subdivision that's in Mangini Ranch, and you can see the location right here, at the intersection of Savannah Parkway and Alder Creek Parkway. The next application is for Phase 3 of Toll Brothers, and it's a minor request that asks for exclusion of outdoor living area from lot coverage calculations. This is going to go to the Planning Commission for review and consideration. And then finally, Mangini Ranch, Phase 1. This is a new subdivision map for a small area at East Bidwell and Mangini Parkway, right here. And so it's 65-unit subdivision, a little over five acres. And as with many of these subdivisions, with the density allocations that are applied to projects, you see that we write the word M.A.M., Minor Administrative Modification, which just means that any unused density gets transferred to another site for the development capacity that was assumed throughout the plan area. In addition to the applications we received, the city's Planning Commission and City Council took action on five separate entitlements over that same six-month period, and I'll just highlight those real quick. Planning Commission approved Russell Ranch Design Guideline Modification and Design Review for Phases 2 and 3. And Steve Kron, our city engineer, is going to go through a lot of the activity. You'll see, again, things are happening quickly after entitlements. We're starting to see site improvements and building permits and things like that happen at a faster rate than we had in the relatively recent past. City Council approved in January the Toll Brothers Phase 2 tentative subdivision map. You'll recall, this was excluded from the original application for the entire Toll Brothers Plan Area and came back so that they could work on tree preservation within the Phase 2 area. So this was approved in January for 329 single-family homes on 65 acres. That is gated, age-restricted, and again, remaining density was transferred to other areas of the plan. City Council also approved in December a Broadstone Estates map extension. This was simply a request by the developer to have a little time to complete the requirements needed to finalize their map in order to move forward with improvements. City Council did the same thing for Folsom Heights map extension request on the same meeting, where the developer simply asked for a little more time on the final map or on the subdivision map approval in order to complete the requirements to finalize their map. And then finally, the City Council in January approved Phase 2 map amendments and design review for Russell Ranch, and this simply removed the active adult designation for several of the lots within that particular subarea. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Kron to talk about the site improvements and building activity.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. I'll briefly go through the balance of the presentation, and feel free to interrupt and ask questions as we go or wait till the end, whatever you so desire. But this is kind of a general overview. It's from the east-looking west aerial footage, but right there in the foreground is Russell Ranch Phase 2. This is actually about a month, two months old, this photo. So grading is pretty much done in Russell Ranch Phase 2. It's complete in Russell Ranch Phase 3, and both of those subdivisions there have their underground going in, all of their underground improvements. And we expect both of those subdivisions to be paved and those lots ready for permits in the second quarter, or the third quarter of this year. Moving west, Mangini Ranch Phase 1C North is just about complete grading, completed grading, and they're starting underground infrastructure as well. Van Dale Apartments and Bungalows moving west, and Toll Brothers, all of those are under construction and doing significant underground, as well as Mangini Ranch Phase 3. So going in kind of in a clockwise direction across the top, those are the areas identified where we're seeing a significant amount of infrastructure, grading infrastructure, and improvements being constructed at this time. And we expect all of these subdivisions that are shown, all of these improvements, permits to be issued within them, and infrastructure to be complete here in the third and fourth quarter of this year. This is kind of a general overview of our final map activity. We're seeing, we have several, we have over almost 1,000 lots in review right now for final map approval, and we expect all of those small lot maps to be approved by the Council in the third and fourth quarter of this year. So that would bring us close to 4,000 map lots by the end of the calendar year. Now, this is kind of a general overview. We see quite a few, in the first quarter of 2022, we saw quite a significant amount of permits being issued. I believe in February, we had 100, just over 150 permits issued. So in that first quarter, we had 300, almost 395 permits, I believe, issued in the first three months. Slowing off, slowing down a little bit in this month. We're looking at about 39 so far this month, so it's dropped off a little bit. But right now, the infrastructure is catching up, so we would see a surge in permits as the infrastructure gets completed and more permits being issued. This is kind of a general overview of those areas and activity that we're looking at, that we're looking at having permits being issued in these developments that are circled. Russell Ranch Phase 3, the models are almost complete, and they're almost complete with infrastructure, and all of these are expected, as I mentioned, to be having permits issued, infrastructure be complete this year. This is kind of the neighborhood, 1 and 1C. We added 1C to this slide. That's the area. And within 1C, we've got an arrow there pointing to Mangini Place Apartments that St. Anton's is going to construct. They're getting close to getting their site work approved. The grading is just about complete in that, in the 1C subdivision. The next slide is kind of a building activity. Those are the same builders generally within there. The new addition will be TriPoint. We'll add that in next time. TriPoint will be building the homes in the 1C North subdivision and 1C South, villages 1 through 4. And here is kind of an overview looking east of Mangini Phase 2 neighborhoods. This is very similar. We're seeing a lot more, we're seeing a lot of permits being issued in those, by those builders. Savannah Parkway is currently under construction from the extension of this all the way to White Rock Road. The grading is essentially complete now, and they're starting underground, and we expect that. And we expect that road to be open sometime in October of this year. Savannah Parkway, which would extend all the way to White Rock Road from East Bidwell. These are the builders. They're the same builders. TriPoint is now building in Villages One and Two. And that's the new photo we added there for their models, which I believe are open now.
Just silly question, Steve, but
Yes.
Why are the builders using the same subdivision names that they're using in, say, Roseville?
I would not know the answer to that.
Just, just a suggestion. I mean, we don't need to see all the names, all the same subdivision names that were seen in West Roseville.
Maybe it's a similar product and that's why they're
I'm sure it's exactly the same product, but, you know.
Okay.
You're paying somebody in the marketing department.
I can certainly bring that to your attention.
Okay.
Which I certainly will. Now, this is the Russell Ranch Neighborhood. This is probably going to be the last slide of this subdivision as far as new infrastructure. We have three permits left to issue in Russell Ranch Phase One. This is one of our first permits, first subdivisions. We issued permits in, as I mentioned, we have out of 394 lots, 391 permits have been issued. So they'll, they'll be wrapping up this year and most of those houses will be complete and occupied within this subdivision. And so Anthem United, Meritage Homes and the New Home Company currently don't have any other lots available to build on, so we may not see them in town again until they purchase some additional lots. And these are the same ones. So this was just kind of wrapping up. This will probably be the last time we'll include this slide in the presentation because the subdivision will be built out and the homes completed and occupied. This is Phase Three. This is Lennar Homes. This is looking from the north, looking south. It's a pretty good shot, actually. The water tank on the left, the clubhouse for Russell Ranch HOA is there on the left. And they're starting the models there at the top of the hill. I don't know if you've noticed them driving up the freeway. They're right kind of at the top of the hill. There's, there's models there under construction and they're getting ready to pull production permits if they haven't already. And Phase Three, that's Three A that's paved. And then to the right is Three B. The underground is almost complete in that subdivision. They'll be paving that most likely in the next month. So we'll see houses being built in both Three A and Three B for Russell Ranch. And all of those lots are, are owned by Lennar Homes. And that's kind of not a great photo. Their, their model's under construction, so hopefully next time they'll be done and we get a much better photo of them. The other side of the street actually had more construction activity, so I cut that one out. This is the White Rock Springs Ranch Neighborhood. Again, this one's essentially complete with all the infrastructure. Three different builders pulling permits out there. We're just close to almost, or over 300 permits out of the 395 permits in this one. So I would expect this subdivision to be built out and occupied and complete by the end of this calendar year as well. Those are the same. JMC, Richmond American and Lennar are building homes in that subdivision. This is Toll Brothers Folsom Ranch. This is a little better view from the south looking north. They have 198 lots mapped, I believe, so far. And they pulled already, I think, 176 permits on those 198 lots. So they're moving quite rapidly. And so it's really evolving out there, the site. There's a lot of home building, construction activity going out, going on out there. The bridge there, I don't know if you can see it kind of on the top left of Mangini Parkway, that is almost complete. And that will allow Mangini Parkway to extend all the way to Oak Avenue Parkway. Those plans are approved and those improvements are under construction. And the Model Home Complex has, has opened, I think, about two months ago. And I think they've had some pretty brisk sales in their subdivision.
Is this the, is this the 55 community?
Yes. Age-restricted. That's the Regency portion of it. They also have a traditional subdivision off to the west, which is Russ, Phase Three. And I'm not sure if they're building homes or they're going to sell that subdivision to another builder. And there's a couple of shots of their Model Home Complex. I think they have 16, 16 Model Homes in their Model Home Complex. And that concludes my presentation or my portion of it. If you have any questions, I can certainly answer them. If not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask a question about items eight and nine, if that's okay.
Please do.
Perhaps somebody could just illuminate what the Historic District Connectivity Project is that we're seeking some grant funding for? And then what the Folsom Placerville Rail Trail Project might entail.
Brian, I'm going to ask Brian Reed to come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. The Connectivity Project is, is basically connecting some of the neighborhoods from East Bidwell and the apartments that were just built across the street from the middle school and getting them a path of travel, pedestrian and bicycle path of travel down to Sutter Street.
So it's sidewalk improvements along Riley.
Bicycle improvements from
Okay. And then item number nine is Folsom Placerville Rail Trail Project. Hopefully there's not a two missing in there.
No. It's a, it's a project that's been ongoing for a while and we're waiting for the water line along the East Bidwell rail corridor to be installed. And Parks and Rec has a rail project that goes along that and that's what that rail trail is for.
So it's a trail adjacent to those rails?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
The easement along there, is it, the easement, I think everywhere along that the railroad is 60 feet, so there's more than enough space. And we've already got trails along in that rail easement over much of it.
Yeah. It could be a concurrent use.
Excellent. If there are other items, I'll
I would like to pull item four and have that voted on separately because similar to last meeting, I'll be recusing myself from that item.
I'll move items three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 13 and 14.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. Do you have anybody who wants to move that?
I'll move ordinance number 1327.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. Which moves us on to item 15, which is a public hearing for Resolution 10861 relative to the budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Stacy Tamanian, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight is the public hearing for the fiscal year 2223 operating budget and the capital improvement plan. And this is your first opportunity for adoption of the budget. I just have a very brief recap for you tonight of the more detailed presentation that was given on May 10th. And I will note that there have been no changes to the proposed budget that you received at that meeting. For review, we started this process by projecting next year's revenues and that projection is 102.4 million. It was a $9.9 million increase over last year's budget. And this increase is the result of very conservative budgeting for fiscal year 2122 when we were right in the middle of the pandemic. And then that's combined with tax and non-tax revenue that have both recovered from the economic downturn sooner than we had projected. So it's important to note that the increase from the prior year budget going from the 92.5 to 102.4 is not something that we expect to see going forward. It's not a revenue trend that will continue into future years where we're seeing a $10 million increase year to year. For the expenditure, the expenditure budget, we're working toward the 102.4 million dollars of revenues. And so we start with last year's appropriation of 92.5 million. We first reinstated all of the cuts that were made due to COVID-19. That was 3.6 million dollars. And then we had to add the, the amount that it costs to continue doing our, our current level of service. That cost increase is $4 million. So when we take the 92.5 million, we reinstate our COVID-19 reductions of 3.6 million. And we add the $4 million to continue doing what we are doing, it gets us to $100 million. So that left the city manager with about $2.3 million for new budget additions. For your review again is the list of the proposed additions. At the top, we have seven firefighters. That would be for the Folsom Plan Area Fire Station. We have three additional firefighter positions. These are currently limited, limited-term positions and this is to make them permanent. We have about $250,000 for additional capital funding for a Type One fire engine. We have an additional police officer position, a dispatcher position and an animal control officer. Then we have $86,000 for GIS contact, contract staffing. $51,000 for election costs for the 2022 election and $50,000 for additional funding for outside council. 10 of these positions totaling 1.4 million is related to providing services, services to the Folsom Plan Area. These additional positions are funded by increases in property tax revenue that's coming from that new development. And the timing of implementing these additional positions was determined by the Folsom Plan Area Financing Plan. So we're recommending these additional positions according to that plan. This slide displays the General Fund Proposed Appropriations by Department. The total proposed appropriations for the General Fund is the 102.4 million. And that includes the $3.6 million of reinstated cuts, the $4 million of increases to continue providing our current level of service and the $2.3 million of new budget additions that were just presented on the previous slide. And it's broken up by the department that it falls under. Here again is your summary of revenues. The total revenue projection, including those from transfers in from other sources, is 102.4 million. At the top, property tax is expected to remain stable at this point and increase over the prior year by 3.5 million to 36 million. Sales taxes are estimated to be at 27.9 million in 2223. It's a $3.3 million increase over the fiscal year 2122 budget. But it's only a $1 million increase over where we think the end of the year fiscal year 2122 is going to end up. So we've had recovery from the economic downturn. We're seeing that in this current fiscal year. And then there's a 2.5% growth projection that's factored in to get you to this sales tax projection of 27.9 million for next year. We have transient occupancy tax at 2.2 million. Charges for services at 11.7 million. That increase is primarily due to Parks and Recreation Programming Revenue, moving back to their pre-COVID levels. And then we have licenses permits in VLF proposed at 13.2 million. That's a $1.8 million increase and mostly due to continuing high level of billing permit activity, a recovery in our business license revenue and an increase in VLF revenue, which is related to increased development as well. Here's your chart showing the unassigned fund balance, otherwise known as your emergency reserve. And by year, it's listed within these blue columns, back to 2006 through fiscal year 23. And then the red line is your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. Back in 2006, we were at 26.6% and we're projecting by the end of fiscal year 23 to be at 22.4%. So still well below that high point back in 2006. And the council's policy is a minimum reserve of 15%. And that 15% policy is actually below the GFOA's recommended best practice that you would have at a very minimum two months of operating expenses in reserves. So that would be about 17%. But for a government like us where we've seen that sales tax is very volatile, also we've used up some of our other revenue sources such as the risk fund and the compensated leave fund, which would be looked at when you were looking at total reserves. So the best practice for a city with our current revenue makeup would be reserves of three months or 25%. So we're, we were there back before the Great Recession, but we're struggling to make our way back and they're sitting at 22.4%. Here you have your appropriations by fund in total for all city funds. The proposed budget includes the 102.4 million for the General Fund. Then you have your enterprise funds, special revenue funds, debt service funds, capital projects funds, internal service funds and your fiduciary funds for a total citywide appropriation of 248.5 million. And one more look at the five-year forecast. You have your projected revenues from fiscal year 24 through fiscal year 28 represented by the blue bars. And the projected expenditures are going up on the red line. And the noted amounts in the brackets are the projected shortfall between the revenues and expenditures for each of these years. So this is just a continued reminder that this forecast is predicting an upcoming structural deficit, which means that we will have more expenses than we'll have revenues to pay for them. It grows from about $1 million in fiscal year 25 to an annual shortfall of $3.4 million. Excuse me, by fiscal year 28. And that $3.4 million funding gap by fiscal year 28, really none of these years, include the $20 million of unfunded annual needs that we have not been able to include in the budget. And so it just continues to be deferred year after year. So that was the summary of the proposed budget. As I mentioned, nothing has changed since it was presented to the council on May 10th. You do have an option to make a motion to adopt tonight. Looking forward, if you do not adopt tonight, you'll have the other, another opportunity at your June 14th meeting. And this can continue through the end of June if needed. If no council action is taken before June 30th, then the city manager's proposed budget automatically becomes the adopted budget. And that concludes my presentation for tonight.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I, I like the June 30th one. It's going to be adopted, right? You know, that helps. Stacy, if you don't mind, can you move back to the slide three? Please. Is that, yeah. I know you mentioned the number of positions are coming based on the Folsom Plan Area expected. Police, fire is that's number. Do you know what is the police as per that Folsom Plan Area and any others?
In total or, or by this point in time?
As per the plan area timings. That's what you mentioned, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So as of right now, based on the phasing that we're in, there would have been four officers and then these other two additional positions. And so three officers were previously added in a previous budget. And this is the fourth officer plus the dispatch position plus the animal control officer. And so we're in line with what was planned for police by this time with this proposal.
Okay, that's what planned as per the timings.
Yes.
Okay.
So just a really quick question. So if there are three police officers that are currently, that were previously hired for the Folsom Plan Area, are those officers, the work that they do right now, is someone going to fill that, that, those roles or the job? Or is it going to have an impact to the north side of 50?
I'm not sure if Chief Hillman may be on the line. I'll check first to see if, I think he is. Chief Hillman, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. In the 201819 budget, when the police department received three officers, there was nothing south of Highway 50. Those officers were assigned to the Community Crime Suppression Unit, which is a sergeant and two officers. And since the development and growth south of Highway 50, we have not reassigned them yet. The one officer that we would be receiving in this current budget proposal would go towards providing some patrol services in the south of Highway 50 area. I hope that answers your question.
So are there services that are going to be impacted currently that these police officers are assigned to? Or are you going to have to take the work and divvy it up to other police officers?
So officers that have been assigned to north of Highway 50 now have to go into that south area and handle calls for service that are occurring out there on a regular basis.
Right. So, so my question is, those three officers that were hired back in, I don't know, the last couple of years that were assigned to the Folsom Plan Area. So the, when they move over to the Folsom Plan Area to patrol, are they going to leave work that needs to get done? And I hate to use a word on this side of Folsom, but is, is is the work that they're doing right now going to be compromised is my question.
Yes. Yes. So we would have to dissolve that unit to put people out on south of Highway 50. That's where those monies are coming. That's where those monies are coming from. So the unit would be the Community Crime Suppression Unit, and those officers would be reassigned to patrol areas south of Highway 50.
And just for my reminder, can you tell me what the Community Crime Suppression Unit does?
Yeah, that was my question.
They handle all different kinds of things that just deal with the quality of life. One of the biggest things is homeless and the issues around homelessness, illegal camping and such that are occurring in the community as well as light rail and problems that we've seen around the light rail stations. Their focus is quality of life issues.
Right.
They're adaptable to whatever problems the community is having.
And so Chief, what is the plan for, for, for these roles? Because just in the past year and a half that I've been on the council, I have seen a tremendous improvement in how we handle homelessness, how we deal with, you know, the illegal camping, you know, some of the concerns that it creates with the risk of fire. I've just seen so many good things happen. What is the plan to oversee that?
Well, I haven't worked through the plan. I know that we are getting more and more calls south of Highway 50 as the area grows. And the officers in the Community Crime Suppression Unit should be assigned out there. So working with my staff, we would have to determine the right way to reassign them. And it would mean doing away with our crime suppression unit until, until we can get our staffing higher.
Yeah, that's a concern for me.
Maybe Chief, this is Mike Kozlowski. Maybe you could also answer, just for some clarity, that, do you have officers that are assigned to specific geography within the city already? Or are they, okay. So in terms of patrol areas, where they exclusively work?
Our minimum staffing for any time of the day is a supervisor and four officers. We have our city divided up into five areas. The area south of Highway 50 is our fifth area, which has not been patrolled. The other areas, say, north of the river and part of the historic district is our one area. And then the rest of the city is divided by, say, major roadways and the number of calls for service. We look at those calls for service and our response times, and we change those geographic areas based on the response times to calls.
I think, thank you for that. That's important, it's important context. I guess my question was more, do we have officers who are individually assigned to specific geographies all the time exclusively? Or are they assigned to patrol duty and the needs of the city that day dictate which patrol area they work in? Or the calls that make them in?
They're responsible for certain areas of the city. So an area, say, it's our beat one area, an officer is assigned there and their primary focus is that area. They're supposed to patrol out there. But they also have to move to other areas when they have to cover somebody. So a call that takes two officers or three officers, we're pulling people from the different areas to move into a beat to cover another officer.
I understand. I just am trying to get to something very specific, which is if I am a Folsom police officer, am I assigned to the exact same beat every day that I work?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So can you elaborate on this, Chief? On one of the tours that I did with PD, and I, and we were talking about calls, a very high number of calls come in related to homelessness or issues related to homelessness or someone having a mental breakdown. And it was usually like in the early part of the day, early morning till about, you know, late afternoon. So if the Community Crime Suppression Unit is dissolved, that means that other officers will then have to take on those calls, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's quite an impact.
Other people.
Okay.
So whoever, say, if it's occurring in, say, behind the police station area, which would be our beat one area, then that beat one officer would handle that.
Thank you.
Chief, this is YK. I know I did ride along with the Community Crime Suppression Unit.
Yeah.
And it's a, quite a bit of heavy, heavy roles they are taking up. And as per your, my understanding based on your explanation, Chief, now we are going to redirect those three officers who are doing the Community Crime Suspension suppression to the Folsom Plan Area. Because those three were allocated to Folsom PD from those budgets. If that's the case, right now, the service delivery, the, the response times are already touching the 13 minutes-ish. So it's my understanding, once we take out three more officers from the crime suspicion, then the other officers are going to fill into that, then the response time is going to be definitely going to increase significantly.
So there, it may increase and it may not. If, for the, for instance, the area south of Highway 50 that'll have officers patrolling it out in that area, the time for responses will go down in that area. We've had to make adjustments. We make adjustments frequently enough. We've had a number of, our traffic collisions have been high over the past few years, especially with injury and fatal collisions. And because of that, we had to move people around and increase the traffic unit on a temporary basis. We're back down to having people spread out back into patrol. And we're also short several positions. So once we get up to our full staffing, we would look at, you know, putting people south of Highway 50 on a more regular basis. Right now, we don't have anybody assigned out there. Our goal is to make that an occupied area so that it doesn't, right now, that area is up for grabs. So if a call comes in for service in that area, it could be assigned to any of the other four officers that are roving around the city. So it could be, and it depends on, you know, what each of the officers are doing at that particular time.
Chief, this is Rosario. Can I ask for some data, just for my curiosity sake? Can I get the overall calls and then those calls that are associated to homelessness, whether it's mental health, whether it's disturbance, whether it's anything else, anything related to the work that the Community Crime Suppression Unit does? Are you able to provide that data?
I don't have that at my fingertips. I don't know.
No, that's fine, not today.
In the audience, and he might have some information there. I don't know if it's that specific, but we can get that information.
Yeah, and the next few days is fine.
All right.
So Chief, this is Sarah. I mean, I don't think anybody wants to dissolve the Crime Suppression Unit. If we could, we would clone Sergeant Zalaya. He is so wonderful.
Sure.
But so with this additional police officer position, does that, that allows you to have somebody in that beat five, south of 50, for one of the shifts, correct?
Yeah.
And we have, what, three shifts?
Three shifts a day. There's overall for seven days, there's six.
Six shifts, so.
Six shifts.
So to be fully staffed in all five beats, we need an additional six police officers, which obviously, then the question is, what are you going to cut in order to do that? But I guess that would be the question for the city manager. Let's just say we wanted to add an additional police officer position going forward. Because some of the things on this list are one time, right? The GIS is at one time and the election costs, obviously, is every other year.
Yeah, the election costs are every other year. The outside council and the GIS contract, I mean, GIS contracts staffing, I would envision ideally repeating it next year. But all of these things are at the discretion, of course, with the passage of each budget. But we do need additional GIS support. And right now, we do need additional legal counsel. Those are the ones you're referring to.
But just to kind of return to a point that I made in our presentation two weeks ago and that Ms. Tmani returned to today. We, due to the decline in sales tax revenue, all that we were able to present was the positions that line up with the Folsom Plan Area Financing Plan. And that's what this reflects.
Any other questions of staff?
I do have. Probably it helps us to understand the Folsom Plan Area Fire Station opening because there are seven positions out there. Based on the recent Station 39 experience and COVID in place, where are we right now? How soon that station is going to be ribbon cutting, up and running, and how the positions we are giving right now? Just to understand, it helps us to see whether we need to grant seven positions right now in 2022, 2023.
November 2023.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Talon Turlin. I will ask Chief Casano to speak to those questions. Just in general terms, the plan is to open the station in November of 2023. And Chief Casano is going to kind of back us up from there as to what is needed to be ready.
I asked that question in my agenda review.
You asked that question.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Ken Casano, your fire chief. That's a, that's a good question. And I think it's, it takes a little bit more of a robust explanation to get to that. So we'll talk about Fire Station 34 to begin with and, and the way that we're kind of designing the build and how we're going to do that. We're going to, we're going to do it in two phases. There's going to be a, a civil kind of phase, a phase one of construction. That includes civil engineering plans. That's, that's rough dirt work, wet and dry utilities, and then the finished building pad. And we're, we're doing this kind of to give the architect time to complete the construction drawings and get those ready for the building phase. It gives us a buildable pad, you know, prior to a lot of the Schweppes requirements for construction, you know, as we enter the rainy season. So that's part of what we're doing initially for Phase One. And that's, that's in progress right now. We hope to have the civil plans done and out for bid hopefully sometime, you know, next month or soon after that. Because we really want to get started and have that phase done by November this year. I'm going to back up just a, just a little bit and kind of answer the question as to why we're even building Station 34. And that is, is because of a commitment to the community, a commitment to the developers out in that area that we would have public safety services out in the Folsom Plan Area. The city set trigger points for that and for those services. I believe it was 1,400 permits issued would be, and this is a part that I don't know how to answer because I'm not really sure. Is that when we start a station? Is that when we're supposed to have a station? Or is that when we're thinking about a station? But irregardless, you know, there are currently over 2,200 permits that are issued. There are, as you saw in the previous slides, you know, 13, over 1,300 occupancies out there. And that kind of equates to almost 4,000 residents. And I can tell you that the plan area right now for the fire department and our services, it takes an extremely long time for us to respond right now into that area. And there's 4,000 residents out there. So that's kind of why we're, the reason for the station. It's just a huge service gap that we have right now in our, in our city.
So Ken, the closest fire station is the one on Clarksville, right?
Correct. Station 37 would be the closest.
And I, just to back up what you're saying, we talked about this years ago, and it's not a question of spending a year and a half building the fire station, then magically you snap your fingers and the firefighters are there. They have to be trained and they have to know who's going to end up at that station. And that you can't just wait until the ribbon cutting and then have the new firefighters show up.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. I'm almost to that point. I'll continue on and get to the Phase Two of our construction plan, which is basically architectural design and, and what we're going to, what we're going to do to actually finish the construction draw. And I have all this listed out. I don't have a slide for you, but I can certainly get you this on paper where it chronologically goes through each month and what, what the element is that we're going to be accomplished. But the, the bottom line is, is that the, the station is scheduled to be completed November 2023.
That's the blink of an eye in construction terms. It'll be here very, very rapidly soon.
It will be.
But because you have three shifts, you'll have to have nine firefighters there for full staffing, correct? So we're taking care of seven of them this budget cycle. Presumably, we're adding two more next year.
Correct. That's if we want to stay one person overstaffed on every shift. That's what the, the three limited term positions was initially for. It gave us an overstaffing on each shift by one personnel. And that was to, well, at the time, just to fill in a gap of our staffing crisis that we had going on with a lot of the vacancies that we had. It will also help curtail some of the overtime that, that our department generally has. And I, you know, I, I gave a presentation a few council meetings ago about our overtime. It was during the day one, so.
But so you run three people on an engine, right?
We, our anticipated plan is that Station 34 will open with one engine company, and that is three person per shift. There are three shifts, so nine personnel.
And no ambulance out there at this time?
Not at this time. And again, that would be something that, you know, we look at the data for unit hour utilization for our medic units. And when that gets to a certain number, we look at putting on another medic unit.
Chief, maybe you could just address your, the process, how long it takes you from the moment you're, you know, I say, Chief Casano, go ahead and hire firefighters. What does your process look like? How long does that take?
In general, the process of hiring a new employee is anywhere between hiring an employee and getting them online as a functioning employee is about six to eight months. And, you know, the process is, you know, of course, we go out for a job announcement. We have written tests, we have physical agility testing, we have skills testing, we have interview and selection process. And then once we select them, they still have, you know, live scans to go through medical, physical, background checks. And then we have an internal academy. It's just an orientation academy that's generally between eight and 10 weeks long. After that, they graduate from that. They go on to typically a medic unit and they're with a FTO. And they have an evaluation period that can last anywhere from one rotation, which is a 48-hour shift, or it can be up to 10 rotations, so about a month, before they're cleared and actually working on their own. So it's not, you know, hiring a new employee, and that's, that's kind of been the downfall of the fire department, you know, lately, is that when somebody leaves, it takes us six to eight months to get that person replaced. And during that time, that entire six to eight months, there's a hole that, and that's where a lot of that overtime comes from because either we have to fill that shift or we have to redo services to the community.
Just, and I think I know the answer to this, but is a time, the training time different for, say, a newly hired firefighter versus somebody who may be coming from a lateral, from another department?
Typically not. You know, somebody that's coming from another department, they have all the same skills that the, the employees that we are currently hiring because we require that they have been through a firefighter academy. that the, the employees that we are currently hiring, because we require that they have been through a firefighter academy. And so, you know, most of the orientation academy is just getting the employee oriented to how Folsom Fire does, does things, and gets us, gets them acquainted to our equipment.
Thank you.
Chief, I know the November 2023, I know, I want to understand, that's why, you know, I'm asking, that's why I brought the Station 39 context. We plan, we execute.
Sure.
And most of the times, our execution always delays. That's the fact. I don't want to put that, and I can call the Station 38. We were planning, but it got delayed a few months, two, six months almost. So when I'm looking at this, knowing the current supply chain scenarios and everything, the reason why, you know, how do we help the other departments, you know, the staffing wise? That's why I'm asking all these questions. So how confident are we going to be opening up that November 2023, knowing all these things?
Well, I'm, I'm fairly confident that, that that's going to happen. You know, that's why we're trying to do this in a phased approach. You know, we're, once we get into the actual construction phase, it'll be a 365-day, you know, that'll be in their contract. But we're saving a few months by doing it in a phased approach, because we're going to get all the civil work done, all the, the site work and the pad completely done. When we did 39, when we started, that was included in the build, and it took, you know, I think we started in August of 2017, and then the station opened September 11th of 2018.
Okay. I did some research online. I just want to be, you know, more prepared here while coming, how the other states and other cities are. It's taking anywhere two to three years to complete fully. I mean, that's how, my understanding, my analogy, of course. Our approach could be different here?
Yeah.
Our approach?
I would say that a two or three-year build, it would be pretty unheard of for what we do as a, you know.
We'd never have that situation.
Yeah, I, I mean, that, that's a, an incredibly long time, you know. Even, even 38, when we were doing that for COVID, we did delay it, you know, a few, it came out to be about a few months, but that was all, so.
I, I'm only taking into consideration all the supply chain things and, you know, COVID situation. I had the city names, you know, my computer was rebooted, it didn't save all the information. Otherwise, I might have given you some examples. Anyway, that's my thing. Since you're confident, you know, I respect Chief's call, and if we have to have those firefighters, then we have to have it. So my other question is going to be on the overtime. I just want to, you know, flip that besides this, because we are talking about where can we save some dollars to help other people too. I hope Chief Hillman is there on the call. Chief, it can be, you know, both ways. I can probably ask you first, sir. I have a last 10 years overtime numbers, how our Fire Department is. I shared some of the documents to my colleagues as well. I, I was trying to gather all that information. On an average, it's almost excluding the Cal OES numbers, like all those reimbursement. It's coming almost to 1.75 to 1.8 million dollars every year overtime. So if we can look at here, how much money we are spending for each firefighter, it's about $150,000. Is there a way, we already spending 1.75 million dollars overtime? Can we translate that overtime? We are paying one and a half times to the officers, in, in all due respect. I see that so much stress, that's what we explained also, and we are losing people. So is there a way we can translate that 1.75 million dollars into some firefighters and come back here and negotiate the numbers? Is there any chance?
Well, I mean, anything that we are overstaffed will reduce overtime.
True.
If we are a constant staff model, then I would say no, because we are still bound by, you know, contract, you know, 522 and, and the, and the MOU, you know, they still have the ability to take vacation days and, and be off. So when we're constant staffed, anytime anybody is off on vacation, anytime somebody calls in sick, anytime anybody is on work comp, anytime anybody has any type of leave, it results in overtime if we're not overstaffed.
Thank you. I'm going to the same place, Chief. Last year, our city manager gave that three positions as a temporary to help you somewhat after that overtime and the people are going. So that's where I'm going back. If we can hire seven firefighters for 1,993, we are already spending 1.7 million dollars overtime. Can we hire more firefighters? That way, we can reduce the overtime, and still you have the staff to train and get ready for Station 35. Doesn't have to be coming from here, but it can be coming from the overtime budget.
So you're asking if I, if I took my over, the overtime budget and hired firefighters from that budget?
Yes. I, I'm looking at consistent, Tracy, I don't know whether we can display that one, the little document I gave you?
Sure.
From the 2011 to 2022. So I, I pull the numbers consistently, and those are, for all good reasons, that is the overtime. But it is resulting because of the lower staff. I think that's what we are talking.
If I could, thank you, Councilmember Chalantirla. Could I ask our CFO to weigh in on this conversation about the overtime and, and as it relates to positions?
I'm sorry, can I clarify one bit of what he was asked, what he's asking that I'm curious about now? Is there a reliable relationship between hiring a new firefighter and any kind of reduction in that overtime budget?
That would be the first issue that we, we don't know, and, and I think that's what Chief is partially.
Yeah, I would say that it's not reliable, because again, you know, you're looking at a firefighter position. We also have two other ranks in that same, you know, that staff vehicles and units. We have engineers and captains, and that extra firefighters doesn't do anything for their, that overtime.
But another comment that I have about overtime is that we're consistently over the budget by about a million dollars, even when we have the reimbursement from Cal OES. So we would have to save that million dollars plus some of what we're budgeting. It's hard, that's hard to kind of explain, but you can't, you're not getting budget savings by reducing the overtime a little bit, because the amount of overtime that we're consistently seeing is over and beyond what's even budgeted. So you would have to save everything that you're going over budget plus some, to get some budget savings to then buy a position.
So to Councilmember Chalantirla, then, is the gist of this, that you're trying to figure out what, see if we can do some analysis of what that reliable relationship might be? Because we're not trying to get budget savings per se. We're trying to provide additional staffing flexibility to the Fire Department so that they just generally have less overtime but have more firefighters.
No, I, I think what YK is trying to achieve is eliminating overtime by increasing the number of positions.
Well, we're never going to eliminate overtime. It's just, can, can we, can we end up doing some analysis that if, you know, if this is accurate, it seems like the projected overtime for this current year is more than $2 million? If we hire three positions, one at each level, does that number come down enough to cover the cost of those three people without eliminating all of that expense, but getting us close, you know, getting, getting sta, getting the staff more right-sized to the job, I guess, is the thing, so you have more flexibility?
Yeah, I think that that, that also involves, you know, a lot of other things. I don't, I don't have the ability to control whether people opt to leave and go to a different agency.
Or call in sick or take vacation.
Or retire or do whatever. Like I said, when any of those happen, people leave or retire, it, there is such a lag time to get individuals hired back. That does create giant holes and, and results in any overtime. Now, what I will say is, you know, with these seven positions and then, you know, the, the three that we already have, one over on every shift, is that there'll be some time period during 2023, you know, maybe up to five months, that, that we will be well overstaffed, that should drastically reduce a lot of the firefighter overtime during that time period. But that, that is if, if nobody retires, nobody leaves, and we're not, you know, we don't have vacancies to fill.
And I think Chief Casano has been here long enough to know that we've, we've had different staffing models in both the Police Department and the Fire Department to try to address the overtime in both departments. There is no way to eliminate overtime in the Fire Departments and the Police Department. And in fact, if you look at the data statewide and nationwide, this is typical of every Fire Department across the United States.
I agree with you, Mayor Hall.
And I wish somebody had, somebody else had found a solution by now, but I'm guessing that's because there isn't one.
Well, the way, the way some agencies are, are trying to deal with it is, is they'll, they'll look at what their agency's contract is with their employees, and if they are given, you know, let's say we have a department and they're allowed to have five people off on any given day, then they'll be overstaffed, five personnel on each of their shifts. That's how some departments do it. Now, that, that's a pretty big, you know, that, that's a cost to that, because that's 15 people over what you actually need. But I can say, at least here in the Folsom Fire Department, there are very few days that go by during the year that there aren't three people off.
Right. So at least going back to Chief, last year, giving, you know, I want to help, you know, more personnel. Thank you, Mike, for, you know, chiming in on that. I'm using the common sense approach here, right? If we have more personnel, it is consistently showing it's almost like 1.7 millions consistently. So that's a lot of money for overtime excluding Cal OES reimbursements. So I have those numbers separate here. So if we can hire seven firefighters, I'm looking at, the reason why we are picking seven, right now, we have almost 46 or 36. So, and by looking at these, we can hire the appropriate ratio. I'm not saying everybody is a firefighter. If we can get for $1 million, seven firefighters, maybe we can hire five firefighters and two other whomsoever is appropriate. I'm sure those additional resources will help you, number one, reduce the stress out on our fleet. And also, that's going to result in the persons don't have to work overtime. You have definitely savings. The reliability wise, you know, we got to dig into that a little bit more. So that's what I'm probably looking at. Some funds we are already spending, but we have to translate that into.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think in a vacuum, absolutely.
Yeah.
You know, you, any type of extra staffing will reduce conceptually the overtime. But like I said, I don't, it's very hard to predict what's, what's happening and what's going to happen, because every time I think we're right on track, something will happen. I'll have people go on work comp, and I'm right back to, you know, struggling to get people to actually come in and, you know, that, it just results in them being forced hired and having to work, which I'm trying to, to reduce drastically in the department, just for the, the physical and the, the mental health of our employees.
And Chief, did you, and you had to brown out a medic at, at least a couple times, right?
I did.
Already?
And that was, of course, during, you know, COVID. You know, at one point, I think we had almost 30 personnel off because of COVID, and it was just resulting, you know, I, my praises go out to the employees that actually, you know, they came in and they worked, they were forced hired, and they went through incredible stresses. But yeah, at the end of the day, enough is enough, and, and we have to pull back our services. And we did close, you know, Medic 36 for, for quite some time to give the employees a little bit of a break.
So these, the three additional firefighter positions that are going to become permanent, those allow you to staff one extra person per shift, right? So where there's a hole, they, they're kind of roving, if I'm understanding this correctly?
Well, it was, yes, but not, not right now, we're eight, eight vacancies short, so.
But theoretically, if you're fully staffed and you have those three extra, one per shift, we could analyze the data the next few years, right? And see if that, if those additional positions do result in a decrease in.
It would definitely help impact the, or reduce the overtime.
If we could ever, I think what Chief is saying, if we could ever get to a point of actual full staffing and actually have one over, then you could actually look at that data, but we're not there at all right now. Chief has been struggling.
So we have the data on how many staff we have at any given moment going backward in time, and we have an awareness of when people were not able to work, looking backward in time. It seems like we could do some analysis that would flush out what a extra body, healthy body at each level might have made as an impact going backwards in time, to be able to get the analysis that I, I'm curious about.
We, we can run hourly reports through our telestaff software. It'll give us, you know, calendar year, fiscal year, whatever you want.
But, but you need to.
Exact number of hours that were used, whether it be any type of leave.
But you'd have to include in that analysis the number of positions on any given day that we were short-staffed.
Correct.
And Chief, you would also have to include environmental situations that, that take firefighters away from the department to go somewhere else to do firefighting in order to really, because that has an impact on the department as well, correct?
It does have an impact. It doesn't necessarily have a big impact on overtime, because that's all reimbursed.
It has, it has an impact on wear and tear on firefighters, though.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm concerned about, is that we are, we don't have enough hands to do the job that we're asking everybody to do.
Correct.
Right.
So I'm not, I'm perfectly happy spending this money. I just want to make sure that, you know, we live by the adage that many hands make light work.
Stacy, is, are we reimbursed 100% from the Office of Emergency Services? Yeah?
Well, actually, more than 100%.
Oh, okay.
We, there's some administrative fee that goes on top of, of what, what we, what they reimburse us. And they reimburse us for the coverage that results in those being gone, so.
Okay. I, I highly recommend, you know, taking a look at it one more time on those numbers. And, you know, giving more resources definitely helps you, Chief. And it goes to probably the burn down and people leaving for some other departments, that could be one of the reasons. It's not only the reason, pay is one reason, and of course, short-staff and burning down. Forcefully, they have to work four days continuous. It helps if you have that additional three kind of more people from this budget.
I'll gladly raise the number if you'd like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's my.
I'm coming there.
That is my question, Councilmember Chalantirla. Are you trying to find positions above and beyond these 10? Or are you trying to pay for these 10 or a lesser number with that analysis?
Yeah, that's where I'm coming now, right?
Okay, so you're trying to, okay.
How do we adjust the, adjust the people year by year over year? Because the new construction is going on every year on an average. Steve mentioned like 800 to 1,000 homes are coming, there is additional property taxes coming. We can always add, like the way you are generous enough not to ask nine positions. You might have asked nine positions, so we are only giving seven positions because of the what, how much money we have. So in the same context, you know, in all fairness, you know, the, the Community Crime Suspicion Unit, it's doing a vital job, I guarantee. And they hired Chief Hillman, I hope he's on the line, in 2018, 2019. And it is resulting, the public safety point of view in the public, by not giving additional police officers. I think in an average, if there is 4,000 people on South, I think we expect Chief should have 4,000, four people. On an average, our service delivery is 1,000 people, one officer. So he does definitely.
That's not, that's not what it is. That's what most police departments would like to have. We've never had one officer per thousand.
You know, go ahead.
We basically do right now, if we have 79 sworn officers, we're going to have 80, and 80,000 people. He's just taking an average.
It's 84,000 people right now, so that's where I'm going, right? You know, it's adding every year, and it's not that we can't put an officer. So in that regard, probably if we can go back to the overtime budget and see there is a room, or innovatively, we can hire a couple of more firefighters and adjust the firefighters from here to police officers. That's my recommendation. We can definitely, you know, continue our analysis. Chief, Chief Casano will definitely get the positions, what he is asking for. Chief Chief Casano will definitely get the positions, what he is asking for, but not from this general budget from the. Some of those positions will be coming from the overtime bucket.
Mr. Timoney, can we can we back up a bit? And and I think we need to go through this a little more because again, that that overtime money is not budgeted. So there there aren't dollars to work from there. And I maybe Stacy could address that again.
Yeah, and I I know it is difficult to for me to just speak it and make it clear. But right now, the proposal for overtime is one point six million dollars. That's the total budget. But we consistently see that it's closer to two and a half million dollars. And so to get savings so that we have a balanced budget, you would have to bring the overtime down to less than one point six million dollars. You have to find savings by adding one, two positions. You'd have to save a million dollars or more on overtime in order to pay for those positions. And that that just, the math doesn't work that way.
Yeah, but budgeted or not, if we're spending it, we're spending it.
Yes, we're spending it. But to balance the budget, I if we only have one hundred and two point four million, so then where does it come from?
Yeah, but if if we are ignoring the fact that we are going to spend an extra seven hundred thousand dollars on firefighter overtime this coming year, even though we know we are going to, that's a whole nother thing to discuss, right?
It is another thing to discuss. It comes out of the contingency. It comes out of many things.
Exactly.
Yeah. So that's that's where I think I'm I I am driving. Still continue have what Chief Casano wants, but at the same time, bringing some firefighters from the overtime hire and increase defer some of these general funds to the police officers. That way, he has that support as well to not to touch. Not to touch is a strong word. Still continue some of those community crime suppression team who are doing amazing ZAB. And that's why people even think, most of the people, when you go outside, hey, you guys have less homeless people in Folsom. That's not true. We do, but we work hard to make sure our community suppression team doing the right job or right, you know, tactics to be not that many in our town, even they are going through the services and various reasons. If we deter those officers since those positions were hired because of the Folsom South, we will have some problems.
I I would I would definitely agree with you. I think just my personal experience with working with them is they know every individual by name, they know their situation, they know their background. And when there's a new person, they're they they become aware of new people. So I I would agree with you there. Councilmember Chalant Charla.
And if I can just, I'll just add one one more bit of information, just in closing. And the city manager is quite aware also is that, you know, we applied for a safer grant for nine firefighter positions. The safer grant, it won't be awarded probably until, you know, it could be November. But that is a three-year, one hundred percent fully paid position for nine personnel. I mean, if we if we get that, that would be great. I think it would free up a lot of extra money in the budget. But, you know, I I can't count on that right now because it hasn't happened. And and if it does not happen, we we just can't wait on these positions. So but there's a possibility.
So the money would be there for three years, but then what happens on the fourth year?
Then the city has to.
Has to absorb the cost, yeah.
Yeah, and those kind of grants, that is that is the tough part. So we, you know, we let a lot of those applications go by, honestly, because we worry about that, you know, third year or the fourth year, whatever, when the grant finishes. But the safer grant is a possibility. We 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 don't know, but if that happens, we would be back before you to have a different conversation. But we today, I felt the best use of only having two million dollars to spend this year was to certainly get Chief the firefighters he needed per the financing plan for Fire Station Thirty-Four and get the police department the three positions that the plan calls for as well.
My my only word is, though, I know Rosario, you mentioned what happens after third year. Our finance director's budget proposal is always cautious. We don't know how Folsom Plan area is going to be. It can be every year. Our community development and builders are going to build eight hundred houses, two thousand houses. So we don't know. So by taking this kind of thing, not permanently, that's an option. At least we can try to have additional staff. If for some reason great risk and hit, then we can at least, you know, taking those three years grant to discontinue those positions. So if we get an opportunity, I always love to jump on those ones. That's that's my point. Okay. In in conclusion, that's that's my proposal here. And also I have one more, but we have to complete with the police and fire. So by upping police, you know, another couple of positions, maybe three, if we can adjust our four based on that requirements, that's my recommendation. That way, they do need those three crimes suppression officers. We can't afford to redirect them.
I just don't want to mislead anyone that this analysis is going to produce. Allow us to have ten firefighters, the three positions up there for PD, and then three or four additional police positions. This is these, this is not, we don't have these dollars in our budget. It is not going to yield four additional positions or three additional positions. I just I just don't want anyone to be misled about some report back. I mean, am I speaking out of turn, Stacy?
No, unless you wanted to reduce some other expenditure, such as using the risk fund again on a one-time basis or all of those recessionary measures that we've talked about for ongoing costs.
I I just want to make one more statement, you know, because in conjunction, we do have a budget for one point six, whatever that number Tracy, for the overtime. We are already allocating. We spend the overtime because of the contentions in the staff and not available staff to take up. So that's the place probably we have to tap and bring some funds to this side and hire it. Because we are consistently, again, last twelve years, we are spending that much money.
Madam Mayor, could I suggest that we open the public hearing so we can give the public an opportunity and then continue our discussion?
Yes, we have one request to speak, and that is from Judy Alexander. And if there's anybody else that would like to speak to us about the budget, if you would please submit a blue card, you'd appreciate it. And welcome, Judy, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and staff and city council members. Thank you for the break and in the process here. I I truly appreciate that. Going to start with here with Heart of Folsom as its president. Here to start with a quote from a very recent book by Sam Quinones called The Least of These. And it's a book a lot about drug addiction and homelessness. And the quote is at the very end of the book where he says that the least of us lies within us all. We are all vulnerable. We we all have have things in our lives that could prevent us from thriving. The Folsom Alliance for the Unhoused, of which Heart is a member, and Sergeant Zee is a very important member of that as well, provides a significant opportunity for us to make sure that we're offering varied and effective services here in Folsom. As homeless citizens are successful in moving off the street into treatment programs, transitional housing and permanent housing, or reconnecting with family and socializing again in the workplaces and other positive environments, there are residual effects. These include reduced use of emergency services, such as fire and police, and also reduced costs, maintenance costs in parks and code enforcement. So just to remember that 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 does happen as we reduce the population of homeless in our city. We look forward, Heart of Folsom, to your continued support. I'm told that twenty-five thousand dollars have been allocated again this year in the proposed budget for homeless outreach and support programs. As part of our program this current year, Heart used the fifteen thousand dollars that you provided us to pay for four apartments for three and a half months at Bidwell Studios. And we hope that this will continue in the new year. The County Continuum of Care, of which some of us here tonight are members, is recognizing that the lack of transitional housing is a bottleneck in plans to decrease homelessness. People are living in shelters way too long. They need to be moving forward. And then there would be room for those that are newly unhoused to get into a shelter and off the street. I I do want to make a side comment that there has been some conversations around that say that Heart has plenty of money. We have enough. Well, we do, and we also have over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of transitional housing commitments coming due in the next twelve to sixteen months. So with those kinds of expenses expected in a volunteer organization that that begs for funds from everybody we can, as the city knows, it pays to have the money in the bank to write those checks. And if permits and planning had been a little quicker, a lot of that money would already be gone. But we don't want to tell people we can't house them if we've told people we want to house them. So we are moving forward with increased transitional housing here in Folsom. Homeless population believes in us.
Judy, I'm going to need you to to speed up a little bit.
We they believe in the alliance, churches and volunteers, and with strategic use of resources, we hope to continue to strive in making homelessness in Folsom rare, brief, and non-recurring. Love is not spoken, it is made, and we are helping our homeless community in a collective responsibility. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on the budget? Okay, any other questions of my colleagues or any motions or?
I would like to not adopt the budget tonight, Carrie, Mayor Howell, because I would like to study it a little more.
Y K?
Mine is since Police and Fire Public Safety is done, I know last time I mentioned about Assistant City Manager. I sincerely request my colleagues trying to help our city manager with that Assistant City Manager role. I was at a CAL Cities, League of CAL Cities, Mike, thank you, you know, partnering there. And I I was attending those next generation leadership, highly, highly. Every city is banking on have a plan of action to help city manager. Again, it's not in any negative way. What if Elaine got a city manager job in City of Sacramento under Darrell Steinberg with a half a million dollars pay?
She still wouldn't go.
Well, our firefighters are going, police officers are going, parks and rec staff are going. Why not city manager? I'm just hypothetical, right? There is a risk. At the same time, I know we have been talking consistently.
Y K, she came here from the City of Sacramento for a reason.
See, I don't know. Thank you. No, I am giving half a million dollars pay, so that's that's a good one to take up. So anyway, so having an Assistant City Manager under Harada is always helpful. And not only that, it is a title and a person. We have been talking consistently about the economic development engine. Even though it is our chamber and other people are running, still, it is highly desirable, highly recommended. People like Assistant City Manager has that knowledge consistently working with them. I know where to find the money. That's what Mayor Howell mentioned last time. I just brought this, you know, a simple one paper. Sorry, you all don't have it. My colleagues has it. I'm just giving one example here. We likewise, we probably may have many and many as we can focus on where we can save some money and put that towards the city Assistant City Manager salaries. And push come to shovel, if we have to bring the contingency funds, whatever that slide was, to twenty-two million to twenty-one million seven hundred, I'm all for it because the risk is high and the rewards are going to be much higher if we can put our city man Assistant City Manager to help. It's my request to my colleagues, because it's important, we all has to find that three hundred thousand dollars plus, including benefits. So I know Elaine is going to be probably, you know, happy, but she said consistently, Y K, I love to have it, but she's taking extra and compromising by putting herself into this and not hiring that Assistant City Manager. Think it, I know I did ask this last year also, and again, I putting it, yes, it is an expense, but it is worth spending from the two hundred and fifty million dollar budget at large.
Okay, Y K, you said that you, so far, you have asked for five hundred and four thousand dollars more for three more police officers and probably about an equal number for three more firefighters. So that's one point oh eight million dollars and three hundred thousand dollars for an Assistant City Manager. Where are you proposing that that money come from?
Okay, I'm going to, oops, I'm going to go back. I I'm not asking extra money for our public safety. We have one point six millions budgeted for the overtime. Taking that three firefighters equivalent dollars from the overtime, chip it into as a resources. At the end of the day, it is hourly, people are working. Whether one person work overtime for one and a half times, or we have three resources there, work for regular time. So I'm not asking extra money, just take out from one point six, whatever that number, Stacy, sorry, I I don't want to.
Basically, you're assuming that all of the fire department overtime will be eliminated, and that's where the the rest of this money comes from?
If I can take my math right, about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars reduce from the overtime budget from fire, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm just looking at the numbers, what it is. If we can hire seven people for one million dollars, that's where I'm talking.
I just have one clarification. That is for nine months out of the year for the next budget, assuming they wouldn't be hired until October first. So that's not a full year's worth of the salaries.
If you can give us, if that is the one sixty-eight, whatever it is, Stacy, I know, whatever it is in front of me, that's all I'm speaking. Whatever it is, it is equivalent to that three firefighters amount. If you can tell us what is that one full year firefighter, that helps carry also.
So, you know, Y K, I would probably agree with you that I think one of the most important positions right now today is to get an Assistant City Manager hired because I mean, I I think putting economic development into the hands of this individual and to really look at, I know we talk about finding ways, but to really look at ways to generate sales tax, to have somebody specialized in that in 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 that role that will end up sort of hopefully paying itself off in the next couple of in the next couple of years. I think that where we are today, we keep talking about, you know, the shortage of money, the shortage of money, then we should be so hypersensitive and obsessed with economic development that and so I think hiring somebody that can specialize in that not, you know, I mean, I think Christine has done a great job in 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 learning, but there's a ramp up time and there's time that we're sort of compromising in being able to generate revenue for ourselves, you know, between now, the next two, three, four, five, ten years. And so I I think that the Assistant City Manager role is most critical where maybe ED can be put under this position. I I would I would, you know, agree with you on that. There was another point I was going to make. I can't think of it now, but anyways, that's, yeah. That's my thoughts.
Mike?
Oh, oh, that I know I was going to say, I think one of the things in the past with Ever Palmer and with Carrie Miller, I think what made them even, you know, I guess, just as successful in their roles was having that Assistant City Manager position under them. I think that's just from, you know, when you have that role, I think it's 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 critical to the city.
I just I just want I just want to clarify that the Assistant City Manager never was responsibility, had responsibility for economic development. The last person that worked as an employee for the City of Folsom that worked on economic development was Joe Lukey and Joe retired, what, about fifteen years ago? Something like that?
Yeah, but just because it's never happened in the past, Carrie, doesn't mean that we can't.
You're missing my point.
Yeah, yeah.
We had an employee. We had an employee that worked for the City of Folsom that was working on economic development solely. It did not work out and that is the reason that we entered into the arrangement that we have with Fed Corp and the Greater Folsom Partnership. I just want to provide that little bit of historical information. Mike?
What is the amount that we're putting into the reserve fund this year from the budget?
$900,000.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
Sarah, any questions for you, from you?
Well, just a couple thoughts. I, I mean, I think everybody here would love to have an assistant city manager and, and multiple police officers, but you know, at my house, I'd like to have new carpet upstairs and a new mattress and new paint and all kinds of things, but you know, I can't afford it all and so you have to prioritize and that's what we're doing here. So I, I had a similar to question to Mike about how much we're going to be putting into the reserve fund. I also am a little bit curious, if we know we always spend about a million dollars over on the overtime, why are we not budgeting what it, what it actually is?
It's just been difficult to get up there. So we've been doing increases year after year, but doing a big jump would wipe out everything else. So we've typically relied on vacancies happen, happening or the contingency fund, a little bit here and there to be able to get to the end of the year.
Okay, and if Chief Hellman's still on the line, I, I know we have a new wonderful animal control officer and I, I see that there's a second one on here and I'm not, again, it's one thing that I'm, I'm sure we need and we would all like to have. I guess the question is, you know, is that the number one priority? Obviously, a police officer is more than an animal control officer, but you know, I agree with my colleagues, I'm adamant that the Community Crime Suppression Unit not be dissolved and, and the city looks fantastic because of all the work they're doing. And you're right, they do know every single homeless person by name and those, those folks trust Sergeant Z and his officers. So, you know, if we were to say to the city manager, you know, let's hold off on the animal control officer, but, but hire another police officer, you know, that's what 40, $50,000 basically that we have to find.
Yeah, I mean, that certainly we can work within if these aren't the, you know, these were the three that are, again, we were, because we didn't have budget flexibility, we were just lining up to the financing plan for South of 50 and it calls for these positions. But if it's, it doesn't, if it's the desire of the council to have a police officer instead of an animal control officer, you know, we could probably make up that difference and swap that out. That does have a consequence though in terms of the services that we were supposed to be providing at this point, South of 50. So I just, you know, want to be clear on that.
We could, for example, use some ARPA money or some kind of con, you, you could contract that position part-time or something with Sac County or something, could you?
We, I mean, we, it has been difficult to get anyone at the county in, in kind of a contract position, but yes, if we, if we needed to contract for some of it, we could, but then we'd be in a position of, go ahead, chief.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
But when we lost our last animal control officer, we did try contracting and we couldn't find an agency around that would contract with us. So we did ask El Dorado Plaster and Sac.
Yeah, so that's been a, that has been a struggle.
Services. And, and then we ended up putting it on different city departments. So put in support help, the street department helped, and then police officers went out to those types of calls.
But so I guess the question-
We feel that one-
In, in terms of, if, if the idea is that these additional positions are supposed to help staff because of the, the number of increased residents out of 50, you know, is that the highest need, an animal control officer over a police officer?
No, I would say that when I, I was asked, the city manager did ask me to prioritize the positions and, you know, we've been, we've had budget struggles for the past several years. Each year, the police department has put forward requests for personnel to keep up with just our calls for service that are happening on a regular basis and that includes animal services calls for service. And I couldn't say that one was more important than the other because we lost the animal control officer, we had none, so obviously we needed at least two to have a, an efficient animal control team. We, when we had none, you know, it caused a lot of problems in the, in the city. Our residents were not very happy. And, you know, it's for police officers, we've been going out to South of Highway 50 more frequently and we get more calls into our communication center for police and fire and we need dispatchers. So there's just a lot of services that have been put off for a long time and we're just trying to do something to catch up with those necessary services.
Yeah, I think that's, that's well said. You know, you heard me say in my introductory remarks last time around that please understand behind this slide are at least minimum over 40 positions that got left behind in terms of requests in all departments, including the police department and the fire department. So this is imperfect at best. It's just, as Councilmember Aquino said, it's just working within a, a very tough budget and having to make tough decisions, but this is, certainly does not at all reflect the positions that we need nowhere close. And it's just kicking our knee down the road. We've been doing that for, for years, honestly.
So Stacy, let's just use the example of, if we wanted to add additional police officer and also, you know, what are our options? We can take something else off this list that's basically equal to $168,000. We could reduce the amount of money that we put into fund balance. We could take something away from the general fund that we've been funding for a long time, right? Any other options out there?
We, we do have the transfer to the risk fund to pay for the benefit costs. It's getting depleted and that, that's about it. That's what we have left for options.
And are we still putting money into the, the OPEB, the Other Post Employment Benefit Trust Fund?
Yes, that is replenished for this year.
$500,000?
And, and a few of those that you listed, I do just want to point out that you would normally turn to those resources as recessionary tools and so you would be using them in a non-recession time and then perhaps not be able to replenish them when an actual recession came. So that's, that's a little bit concerning.
Any other questions?
I don't, and just want to, you know, again, ask my colleagues, we already have a funding for overtime and we are spending on overtime because we have less personnel and bring the personnel onboard.
And right now, we're still short eight firefighters that we already have positions open for.
We are short, what does it mean, Mayor?
We, we have eight open positions for firefighters right now.
No, vacancies comes and goes. I probably because, again, people leave department, people join department. We see every free, very frequently, every other week or every month, police officers are swarring in, firefighters are going through academy. That's the nature of the beast of operations. So I'm not going on that side, but what I'm trying to say is the burnout rate and those, okay, I think I said enough on that one. Rather than thinking, changing the dollars from here, we already have a bucket, $425,862 will buy three firefighters.
No, that's, that's going from limited term to permanent. Those are basically like part-time firefighters that become permanent.
That's what we are paying, whatever it is.
But that's not the cost for three firefighters, is my point. At, at any rate, we, I don't, I don't know that I want to continue to have this same conversation over and over again. Do we have a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to continue this. Hopefully our friends can think through it. I make a motion to continue the budget to next week, next meeting.
Do we have a motion in a second? Do we have any other comments before I call a roll?
Well, I just want to, I, I don't, I know things, you know, evolve and change and, and the whole kind of work-life balance is a little bit different than it used to be, but, but I also know just from having friends and neighbors who are in police and fire, to some extent, I think those police officers and firefighters, you know, they rely on some of that overtime income to, to boost their income, right? And so I just kind of wonder when we're talking about retention and competing with other jurisdictions, if there was no overtime or very limited overtime available, would that have an effect on, on trying to retain some of these people? I don't know, I'm just putting that out there.
I will, I will tell you that whenever I have seen the list of highest paid public employees, because that usually gets posted on the internet or in a newspaper somewhere, most, in most years, those positions are firefighters and those high salaries are because of the overtime. So I, I would have to, I would have to suggest that I would agree with you entirely and that firefighters are used to getting that overtime. And if there was no opportunity to get the overtime, I think that in and of itself could very well be an incentive to go to another agency. Any other questions before I call a question?
My intent is not to eliminate the overtime.
Yeah, I don't want to extend this conversation further either, but it is a fair challenge to do some analysis of what impact you could have on that budget by hiring additional people. I think that's a completely fair challenge. Obviously, if it was easy, we would have done it a long time ago, but there's a lot of smart people here in Folsom and I think we can do some analysis of it and possibly have a positive outcome.
I mean, there's, you're never going to eliminate entirely, but there's a point at which it's excessive.
That's fair, I just, I just, again, don't want to mislead anyone that it's going to yield several positions. You know, we will certainly do that analysis, but-
If it's one, it adds some flexibility to the staffing.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Chalim Chirala?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. That moves us on to convening the joint meeting of the City Council, Folsom Redevelopment Successor Agency, Folsom Public Financing Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, South of 50 Parking Authority Meeting. Clerk will call the roll.
Council and board members Chalim Chirala?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Howell?
Here.
Oh, here, yeah.
And we have our consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second.
Councilmembers Chalim Chirala?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes. So we'll adjourn the joint City Council, Folsom Redevelopment Agency Successor, Folsom Public Financing Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, South of 50 Parking Authority Meeting and reconvene the regular council meeting. I think it took me longer to say that than it took to have the meeting. And which moves us to city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Folsom will begin public outreach about the city's future funding gap, which you all saw up on the slide again tonight, and we will seek public input about the community's priorities for essential city services. We are asking for the public's feedback before the city council makes important decisions. A citywide mailer and survey will be distributed to all Folsom households soon and residents will be encouraged to provide feedback by June 20th and they can take the survey by mail or online. I wanted to remind everyone that designated city-owned open spaces that have high fire risk potential remain off limits in Folsom. The City of Folsom first issued an emergency order last summer in response to extreme fire danger. The emergency order remains in effect due to the ongoing extreme drought conditions and high fire risk. Compost is now available to all residents free of charge. Compost helps add nutrients to the soil, aids in water retention and pest control and helps plants thrive. Compost is available at two Folsom locations, one behind City Hall here and another at the Hinkle Creek Nature Center at 9,700 Oak Avenue Parkway. And finally, the Aquatic Center's summer season begins May 28th for daily recreation swim from 1:00 to 5:00 through September 5th. And our trained lifeguarding staff, which is often a teenager's first job, are always on duty during recreation swim. And that's all I have, thank you.
Council comments? Rosario?
Wow, that was weird. The Folsom Chamber of Commerce is having a business climate and other topics that directly impact our community this Thursday, the 26th, at B-Side Church at 11:30. And one of the big focuses is state and federal water supplies and operations. One of their special guest speakers is our very own Marcus Yasutaki, who is the Director of Environmental and Water Resources. And also my heart goes out to the families in Uvalde, Texas today with the shooting. 15 families in a town of 15,000 population have been affected, so my heart goes out to them. When I hear stories like this, it just reinforces my support of the school resource officers. So I thank them for the work that they do and that's it for me.
YK?
Cable Commission update, we are hiring a new executive director and I am on the hiring panel. I think later this week, we are doing some interviews. Hopefully we'll have a new Cable Commission Executive Director from that. And Public Works Day, I really enjoyed it and it is so awesome, so many kids. Initially, I was wondering, you know, how kids are going to come? Nope, there is no place there for, you know, so many kids were there. Thank you again for Elaine, your team and the city staff. And the organic waste is one of the highlights there. A green bin automated and motion destruction and one of our team members are speaking behind the kids were, they loved it. That's awesome. And I did attend the CAPS volunteers, you know, annual reception. It is so happened, I was at the Public Works and I was talking to Jessica, hey, I want to meet with them. They said, come by on Friday, Thursday, next day. So I just, you know, joined them and I thanked them sincerely on our behalf. And some of the CAPS volunteers, I know Judy was here, they put every year 1,800 hours, some of them. That's almost like a full-time job, right? I know we were looking for here, you know, patients, I mean, they are giving this community.
It equates to nine FTEs.
Yeah, it is, no.
20, 80 hours in a, in a year.
Right, and I want to again sincerely thank publicly for all our CAPS volunteers and they have a recruitment going on. I'm trying to promote them to, you know, they have 15 to 18 vacancies they want to back from 75, I think right now they have 55. And if anyone is interested, CAPS is the best place to volunteer for Folsom. And also I joined our, you know, renowned police officer Farewell, Mr. John, and yep, you know, he served for our community as well as county and military as well. He's a great man. And also, Mike, this was, this is for you, I wish I could have got a little bit more notice. American River Parkway had a homeowners association event. I just came to know a few hours ago, I was driving somewhere, because as fast forward, that's going to be our district and District One and getting together to the people, it's important and they are always curious about the water. I just want to say it. I know Elaine helped me a lot and Marcus is also. The lake is full almost, but we are still putting the restrictions. Why? A common man, that's the right question to ask. And we are trying to communicate to them and Marcus helped us and also we have stay water wise. The newsletters are going out for all our community members, you know, please check this and this has the answer. Why we are still going to be conserving the water, water smart, even though the lake is almost full. With that, thank you again.
Mike?
Okay, two, two things. Our SECOG board meeting was held last Thursday and we had a robust discussion about the potential impacts of the sales tax measure that's likely to be on the November ballot to raise additional-
Which one are you talking about for?
The second.
STA?
The STA measure, yeah. The SECOG staff who-
That's, that would be a countywide-
That would be a countywide sales tax measure that would fund transportation projects through the Sacramento Transportation Authority, which Rosario sits on that board. It's been a little controversial because SECOG, which is the regional agency for all six counties around here, did some analysis of the potential impacts to greenhouse gas emissions as a result of the project list that is currently in the draft version of that ballot measure. And it is, they took sort of a worst-case analysis approach, which is appropriate- And it is, they took sort of a worst-case analysis approach, which is appropriate, but a little scary, because it means that we miss, the region would miss its carb goal, or its air resources board goals. Again, the analysis is based on a worst-case scenario. It's not necessarily likely to happen.
Pray tell, is that worst-case scenario based on one more foot of the connector being constructed?
This is where I'm going with this. So there are a number of projects that are, that were previously part of, there's a lot of projects that are part of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan that exists currently. There are a number of projects in that proposed project list that are not part of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and one key project that is not part of the MTP is the center section of the connector project along Grantline White Rock that comes from Elk Grove to Folsom. So that has been a football for many, many years. It continues to be one. I am optimistic, in spite of the robust discussion that we had, that SECOG will find a way to be in support of that sales tax measure.
Ever the optimist, my friend.
But we will see. I told everybody at the board meeting that the deep, jaded side of me was being overwhelmed by the optimistic side of me, and I think that something will get worked out, and we can stop fighting over the connector project once and for all. But anyway, just, that's a little bit of a long way to go for that update, but it's worth understanding. That discussion will continue at each of the committee meetings this coming month for SECOG and be discussed again at the next SECOG board meeting. So if anybody has deep interest in that topic, call me or join in one of those meetings. And then the only other thing I wanted to announce is I got the extreme pleasure to help set up for, and then welcome everybody to the NORCal Special Olympics, which were held at Vista del Lago two Saturdays ago. They kind of flew under the radar a little bit in terms of advertising the event, but there was a fantastic turnout, and teams from all over, all over Northern California showed up to compete in tennis, swimming, and track and field events. So that's why, that's the reason I was there to help set up. So I got the hurdles set up and got a bunch of other stuff put in place, and was delighted to see everybody out there having some fun, so.
Very cool.
Sport is good for all.
Sarah?
Let's see, I have a request for some future agenda items, three things that all pertain to the Folsom Municipal Code. The first is Chapter 17.52.710. It has to do with appeals to the city council on decisions made by the Historic District Commission and the Planning Commission. The code says that those appeals will be heard within 30 days. Our practice has been to hear them within 30 days unless both the appellant and the applicant agree to postpone it. I'm fine with the practice, I just think it should be codified, and so maybe if we could bring something back that says we're going to hold it within 30 days unless both parties agree.
No problem with that.
The second one, at the beginning of COVID, we looked at some ordinances to kind of suspend to help folks who maybe were going through really hard financial times and needed to raise money or whatever, and one of the ordinances that we suspended, and I believe it's still suspended, is Chapter 5.09, which has to do with garage sales. And in our municipal code, it says that no garage sale can last more than three days, and you're not allowed to have more than two garage sales a year. As the state of California gets more and more over-regulated, I would love to see the city of Folsom go the other direction. I really don't think we need to have a regulation about garage sales, especially in this day and age when most people sell their things online through Facebook Marketplace or something like that. And unless code enforcement says otherwise, if we haven't had any issues with that municipal, with that ordinance being suspended the past couple of years, I say we get rid of it permanently. And then the third one, it was just over a year ago now that we, a majority of this council, adopted a sidewalk vendor ordinance. I am very curious to know how many sidewalk vendor permits we have issued, if any, how many times code enforcement has received a complaint about a sidewalk vendor or has had to respond to a sidewalk vendor in the past year. And then finally, congratulations to all the graduates, especially Andrew David Aquino. Thank you.
My usual warning about slowing down, red lights and stop signs actually do apply to you. Kids are getting out of school, so please keep in mind that most kids, until they're, I don't know, probably close to 30, think that they're completely immune from anything bad happening, so they don't pay attention when they're roaming around or playing basketball in the street or whatever they're doing. So please just assume that they don't know you're there, that they have earbuds in, or that they think they're completely invincible. So please just pay attention to that, because they don't pay attention. And so you need to. Connector, JPA meets on Friday. The, surprisingly, the RT board did find resolution with the city of Sacramento on Roseville Road, because the city of Sacramento had agreed to indemnify RT about setting up a homeless shelter on Roseville Road, which is, you know, way far away from here. But again, I don't think anybody's going to come to Folsom looking to do anything like that. All is well at Regional SAN. Holiday weekend coming up, so everybody have a great, safe Memorial Day weekend, and I encourage you to attend a Memorial Day event near you, and I'm sure there's one taking place at Lakeside on Monday? Monday?
It's usually on the morning.
Yeah, it's usually Monday at Lake 11 o'clock, so. And with that, we adjourned at 8:53.